The order, the November 8th meeting of the Kuzbey School Board Directors. Welcome, everybody. Good to have everybody here. Let's go ahead and we'll go ahead and do the flegable legends.
I have the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, I have the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, I have the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me go ahead and do a quick roll call. Just make sure we have everybody here. All right, let me go ahead and do a quick roll call. Just make sure we have everybody here. All right, let me go ahead and do a quick roll call. Just make sure we have everybody here. At least the ones that I can see, though I can't see. At least the ones that I can see, though I can't see. At least the ones that I can see, though I can't see. Arnie? Arnie? Arnie?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here.
I'm here. Kim? I'm here. Kim? I'm here. Kim?
Here. Here. Here.
Kevin, you bizarre? Kevin, you bizarre? Kevin, you bizarre?
Here. Here. Here.
Hi, Kevin. Hi, Kevin. Hi, Kevin. Adrian? Adrian? Adrian?
Here. Here. Here.
Diane Johnson? Diane Johnson? Diane Johnson?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here.
You mean Diane? You mean Diane? You mean Diane? And Dustin? And Dustin? And Dustin?
Here. Here.
Here.
Good to have you here, Dustin, without delay. Good to have you here, Dustin, without delay. Good to have you here, Dustin, without delay. Let's see, so the first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. Just a couple of highlights. Let's see, so the first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. Just a couple of highlights. Let's see, so the first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. Just a couple of highlights. We have our executive session here initially. We have our executive session here initially. We have our executive session here initially. We did stream down the agenda a bit. We removed things so that are normally on here just so that we have We did stream down the agenda a bit. We removed things so that are normally on here just so that we have We did stream down the agenda a bit. We removed things so that are normally on here just so that we have enough time to do the business with the Kelly and the superintendent service. enough time to do the business with the Kelly and the superintendent service. enough time to do the business with the Kelly and the superintendent service. So if you notice that things are not on here, they're not on here. So if you notice that things are not on here, they're not on here. So if you notice that things are not on here, they're not on here. One thing too is if you have questions like Candace's report's not on here tonight. One thing too is if you have questions like Candace's report's not on here tonight. One thing too is if you have questions like Candace's report's not on here tonight. So but she'll send up the information. If you have questions, you can email her directly. So but she'll send up the information. If you have questions, you can email her directly. So but she'll send up the information. If you have questions, you can email her directly. And then we'll take up any additional time in December to go over her reports that we would normally do. And then we'll take up any additional time in December to go over her reports that we would normally do. And then we'll take up any additional time in December to go over her reports that we would normally do. So that was our best. So that was our best. So that was our best.
I so move to approve the agenda. I so move to approve the agenda. I so move to approve the agenda.
I will second that, if you can. I will second that, if you can. I will second that, if you can. If you are any. If you are any. If you are any. Go ahead and take a vote. Arnie? Go ahead and take a vote. Arnie? Go ahead and take a vote. Arnie?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
A vote aye as well. Kim? A vote aye as well. Kim? A vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Kevin? Kevin? Kevin?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Adrian? Adrian? Adrian?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Diane? Diane? Diane?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
And Dustin? And Dustin? And Dustin?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
The agenda is approved. The agenda is approved. The agenda is approved. Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and dismiss to executive session. Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and dismiss to executive session. Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and dismiss to executive session. Right for charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open meeting. Right for charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open meeting. Right for charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or agent unless he or she requests an open meeting. ORS 192.6602B. ORS 192.6602B. ORS 192.6602B.
It should be off now.
Are we good now? Okay.
Yeah, you're good now.
I call us back to order for this meeting of the Kuzbey School Board as we exit out of executive session. So I entertain any motions as regard to the issue of employee dismissal, disciplining, some of the things that we heard about in executive session.
I will.
Arnie?
I would move that we accept the recommendation for the dismissal of the employee that was sent, given to us from our superintendent.
Thank you, Arnie. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Adrian? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote. Arnie?
Aye.
A vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
No.
I'm sorry, Kevin, are you, you static? Can you say that again?
No, sorry, I had some feedback over here.
Yeah.
Not my end. Okay.
Thank you. Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
And the motions carries. The next item on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which is mostly minutes from a number of our meetings, August 28th, September 13th, September 27th, October 11th, and October 25th board meetings. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I will accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Arnie?
Second.
Thank you. Dustin? Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, the vote. Arnie?
Aye.
A vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the building and staff presentations. And we're going to start tonight. Welcoming Carly Campbell to give us the MHS school update. Welcome, Carly.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so we've got some exciting stuff going on at Marshfield. First of all, so football was league champs. And we are ranked, well, the football team is ranked number one in state. Quarterfinals this Friday are at 7 o'clock. Seniors Dom Montiel and Ezra Waterman were player, were voted players of the year. And Coach Lamont was the coach of the year. For cross country, Alex Garcia-Silver, who is a junior, was the state championship of, or state champion of boys' four-way cross country. The boys' soccer team was league champs for the first time ever in Marshall history, which is really exciting. Speech and debate had a tournament, and the first place winners in their events were Cora Neely, DJ Dirk, and Sidney McCarty. Theater has a new play called Eurydice, Eurydice, Eurydice. I don't know how to say it, but.
It's a Greek, a Greek thing?
Yes. And the four leads are Sidney McCarty, Ellie Robucka, Sam Whitson, and Millie Brick. And it will be performed the first two weekends of February. The MHS charity program is selling wreaths. The holiday food drive started today. This month is college month, which is basically to promote college, explore careers, and find scholarships. Winter sports start practice next Monday, November 15th. Friday is the end of the first quarter, and next week will be conference week. And NHS started peer tutoring for all MHS students, and they will be doing it Thursday's impact. And that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carly? Thank you. Let's see, I did notice we have Becky Crane here. Were you planning to be on the, we might have been removing you off the agenda by accident because we were trying to slim down the agenda. Do you want to give us an update on that?
Sure.
Yeah, please do.
Just press it once? Yes.
Yeah, till it's green.
So, hi, y'all. I just wanted to come in person because a couple of the last months I've had technical issues and weren't, wasn't, you weren't able to hear me, and I'm so sorry for that. I don't have good internet at my house. Dusty can relate, so thank you. So a couple of things, highlights that have been going on, Red Ribbon Week most recently was, we had some fun activities celebrating drug-free Red Ribbon Week. Coming up, we have conferences this month. I'm not sure if the dates of all of them, but I know like for the Core Six, or the K Six, I think is next week, and I'm not sure about the high school, but sometime in the next couple of weeks. We continue to bargain an MOU based on COVID changes this year. Most of our time at the beginning had been spent on how we were going to deal with vaccine mandate and people that were not vaccinated. We continue to meet and problem solve other issues. Most notably, I think currently is the issue of just the fact that our teachers are very tired, or our licensed staff is very tired. Student contact is up quite a bit from previous years. At least partially, if not all, as a result of kids eating in our classrooms has just taken away any time to get any work done for teachers, so that makes it harder. I think a lot of, we had a lot more quarantines than we expected we would this year. And, and the amount of work that it required to get ready for those, to support those kids that in quarantine took longer than we expected as well. So just hearing that across the board, everyone is very tired and has no time. And you know, the, as we meet on both sides of the table for MOU bargaining have been really open to try to find ways to support, but honestly, we haven't found a way to support yet. We thought maybe we had a solution that, but it only worked for like K Six, and it didn't work for 712. And, and that's, that's just not. work for 712, and, and that's, that's just not going to work. So we continue to discuss and, and support, and I'm really proud of, you know, everybody that's been involved with those discussions because it, it's like even playing field. We're all trying to just support each other, and I appreciate it. I know that we are about to look at doing some mentor training. District and myself and CBA reps will look at how to address mentor trainings for, for mentees and mentors. It's been really hard to address and support new hires as they come in. They're kind of trickling in this year as we've, you know, they haven't all been, weren't all hired before school started, and so some of them, I hate to admit that I have not even been able to meet, let alone, you know, support. So we'll work on that issue as well. And another big project that we're going to be working on soon, as some of you may recall, our new contract, we agreed, when we negotiated our newest contract, we agreed that we would, we needed to take a deeper dive into our extra extended duty contracts. Nobody has any really historical knowledge as to how the, all the decisions were made to put each position in which category, and we want to kind of take it apart and put it back together and, and have some reasoning behind it that we can share with others. And so that is coming up with a bunch of reps from both sides of the table. And last, we, you may recall that last year we talked a lot about educator empowerment academy team that we had and that we met, and we, we would frequently update you here at the board, at board meetings, what we were doing. We were working on communication systems, trying, seeing if we could problem-solve some solutions to problems we had with communication in our district, as well as getting a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee off the ground. We're back at it. There's, the team is back, back to work, and next month, we have a presentation to give you about the edu, the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, and, and hope to work together on that. Last thing I wanted to mention is when I had to follow up from last board meeting with an email letting you know that, sorry, you couldn't hear me, I, I mentioned that you're welcome in my classroom anytime, and I'm pleased to say that Diane Johnson was able to join me one day last week. She also, fair to say she has a daughter in, in the group, so made sense, but it was really fun to have her, and thanks for coming, and now that we are, we can have a, have you come by, please do so. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Becky. Thanks for letting us see you in person tonight.
Yeah. It was good to see you.
So much better.
All right, next we have highlighted schools, and tonight is Sunset. I see we have John Shelley here.
Hi, everybody. Last spring, if, if you recall, I talked with you a little bit about all the work that we have been doing at Sunset to become a more trauma-informed school, and we've continued that work this year with our partnership with U of O and South Coast DSD, the training of our student support specialists, and, and so that work is ongoing. But this year, we had an opportunity to work with someone through South Coast DSD and U of O in supporting our staff. Becky definitely was right. Folks are, are tired, and, and this year has presented with a lot of challenges for students and for staff, coming off of a year of hybrid schedules and students not being in school full-time. And so in support of that, we started working with a gentleman, like I said, from U of O, who is supporting teacher wellness and social-emotional learning, and he has worked with us for a couple of sessions now on stress, stress reduction for teachers, and training in concepts such as mindfulness and active listening, as well as instructional concepts and technology for students. So with all of that, we have been doing a lot of work around making students feel comfortable and included, and so Aaron Ralston, I'm going to introduce Aaron, our school counselor, who will talk with you about some important things that we're doing with students this year.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to highlight some of the initiatives we've been working on at Sunset. We, as Shelley explained, embrace the notion that in order for students to learn and grow, that they need to feel safe and supported here at school. And so along those lines, I wanted to highlight a couple of programs that we've been doing and some activities. First of which is, as part of our TISS team, or Trauma-Informed Systems of Supports team, we have been working on just our school-wide messaging as a whole, and that includes our outreach to parents and our families. And so as part of that, we have developed a guide for our new families. So this would be for students and families who start after the beginning of the school year, and just to welcome them and briefly explain our focus on students' social-emotional health, and answer, try to anticipate whatever questions they may have as a new member of our Sunset family. So there's some really good information in our new family welcome guide, just things like schedules and calendars, and how our lunches work at Sunset, and our, highlight our free lunch and breakfast programs, how to make sure that their students can get to and from school safely, whether they're a drop-off or riding the bus, how parents can get involved, which has been somewhat limited this year. But it's, it's definitely a work in progress. We highlight in there some of our programs, activities, events, committees, and clubs, and of course, at the end of the guide, there are, there's a spot for frequently asked questions like, you know, things like, what if, what if I need to pick up my child early from school? What's the process for that? Or if I'm concerned about my student's academic progress? Right now, it is in the process of getting translated into Spanish so that all of our families can benefit from that. Another thing I've been working on as kind of my role, providing universal supports for our students, is re-envisioning our leadership program here at Sunset. So we are trying to roll out a program, a leadership program, that really focuses on helping others, and we've entitled it Anchor Crew. And so one of the main goals of Anchor Crew is to provide social and emotional support for our new students. So our Anchor Crew members will be trained to welcome and greet new students, to be a buddy for them for like the first week of school during lunch or recess, just kind of help make that transition a little less stressful for them. They'll provide a tour and introduce them to some of our key staff. They'll get a little coupon book that looks like this, and inside the coupon book, they'll go around, and this coupon, for example, says, "Visit the principal, Ms. McKnight, located in the principal's office," and you, this will entitle you to a Sunset pencil. Or, "Visit the librarian, Mrs. Shields in the library," and this coupon entitles you to a free book or bookmark. They will get a new student folder, which will have some important information for them, and we hope to also include our Anchor Crew members in things like when we bring up second graders to tour a building in the spring, or to assist with fun family nights, to run a welcome booth, and things of that nature. Which brings us to the final thing we wanted to showcase and share with you all tonight, which is our Start With Hello program. So in September, we rolled out Start With Hello, and Start With Hello brings attention to the growing epidemic of social isolation in our schools and our communities. It really empowers young people to create a, a culture of inclusion and connectedness within their school. And to make it more fun and engaging, we did it in the form of a Spirit Week. So we had Start With Hello Spirit Week, where there were dress-up days, and we had little giveaways like this, where it says on one side, "Start With Hello." They got a little bracelet that said, "Start With Hello." And then really, the core meat of the program is a training that teaches students kind of these three steps, which are, if you see someone alone, reach out and help, and start with hello. So to help kick our week off, we had some of our students put together a little kickoff video, and that's what we'd like to share with you now.
Sarah, are you able to play that video now for the board?
It'll be just a second.
Start With Hello is a violence prevention program that came out of the Sandy Hook Promise group, which was a group of parents who lost children in school shooting, which was tragic, and they've put together a, kind of a program, and we'll get to see some of that now. Thank you.
It's not going to play on the, you're not going to hear the sound.
Oh, can you play it on your computer there at all?
I'm going to have to mute this.
If you can't make the sound work, it's, it's just music in the background. Students are, you know, it's mostly a visual. And it's music. Students aren't speaking.
Okay.
But you know, just like with a good movie, the soundtrack, you know, is sometimes really important.
Just don't forget about me.
All right. Very hard to make out the small letters, two of the signs.
I have no idea. You guys will all have a week.
Perfect.
I saw some of them. They're sort of negative self-messengers, I think that's the one was.
So, well, maybe I can send it to you all in a link that you can hear.
I'll make sure they all have the link sent to them.
Thank you, Sarah. I just tried to play it, and it, the sound did work.
It's just Murphy's Law. That won't work for us. When I share my screen, it just won't. Yeah, as soon as this is over, it's going to work just fine. Yeah. It's good that we'll have a link because I can't see it or hear it, so. He kissed her.
So this was just a really good way, I think, to kind of kick off our, you know, school climate and environment this year with our students, and get them thinking about reaching out to others, and making sure that people aren't feeling isolated. We've all dealt with a lot of isolation lately, and what we know from the research is that students who are isolated can become victims of bullying, violence, and/or depression. And so that is kind of the premise of, and how this is kind of looked at as a violence prevention program, just part of what they're doing at Sandy Hook Promise.
Thank you, Aaron. Sorry that the sound wasn't good, everyone. Like I said, really makes it much more effective if you have a good, good soundtrack when you're watching a film of any kind. So hopefully, if you get an opportunity to watch it, I was proud of how well our kids did. They really stepped up very early in the school year when they hardly, you know, a lot of them didn't even know each other, so it was, it was an effective introduction to the week. Laura Means, before we conclude, did you have anything to add?
I just want to say that I'm really proud of the work that we're doing at Sunset, and I feel like the "One Team, One Goal" district motto is part of who we are. We're definitely, we feel connected to our community, and sometimes we feel a little isolated, but we work hard and are very goal-oriented. It was really exciting to see Carly Campbell speak tonight, because she's a former first grader that I had, and she also introduced Don Montiel and Ezra Waterman, who were in the same class, so shout out to all those kids, and it's, it's just great to be here at Sunset, and great to be in Kus Bay in a wonderful school district. So thank you all for your support.
Does anyone have any questions before we let you get back to business?
No, but this was wonderful. Thank you. I enjoyed the presentation and look forward to watching the video.
All right, thank you very much. Woo, skated on without any question. I love it.
Thank you all, Sunset team. We're back here.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, next up is Superintendent Brian Kendall, and updates from him. Welcome, Brian.
Thanks, David. I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend a ton of time here. You heard a lot from me two weeks ago at the data meeting, and you're going to hear a ton of information here as soon as I'm done. But did just want to highlight the fact that this week finishes up the first quarter of the school year. It's amazing that we are... It's amazing that we are already nine weeks into this thing. Although, if you ask some, they may feel like it's, it's been 19 weeks. But we are finished this week with the first, first nine weeks. We have grading day on Friday. Staff have the opportunity to work in their room, get their grades updated, so that they're ready and prepared for conference week next week, throughout the week. And so, you know, we, we've heard a lot about staff being, you know, there's a lot of stress, a lot of, a lot of folks feeling the pressures of, of this year. That, that goes for everybody across the board, whether that be teachers, classified, administrative. I think everybody's feeling it. You know, our, our calendar is our friend right now, with this week being a short week, next week being conference week, and then you got Thanksgiving week. And so, you know, we have a little bit of a break, kind of take a moment to catch some air. And then we have three weeks before we go into the winter break. So, you know, we have some time here to talk about some things and to work with our unions and come up with some ideas. As Becky said, we thought we had a pretty good idea on how to take a little pressure off, but it just didn't work across the district. It worked well for K-6, but did not for 7, 712. And so whatever we do, we want to make sure it is fair and equitable across the district. And so we'll continue to work. We'll continue to try to think outside the box and come up with some ways that we can ultimately take a little pressure off the system. But that's where we're at right now. I open it up for questions.
Any questions for Brian? Looks like no. Oh, thank you, Brian. Appreciate your update.
You bet.
All right. Let's see. There's a couple things that I was supposed to let you all know. There is a OSBA Annual Virtual Conference on November 16th, and Sarah will send you out the information around that already has, I think. There is also one on the RSL, RSSL Resiliency Framework in Action. That's one of the seminars that's available if you're interested. But, and it is virtual, so it should be easy for us all to attend in our pajamas if we want, so. And then just to briefly, too, I just want to give a, for the update, you know, the negotiating committee was pulled into doing an MOU, a understanding around, around the classified union, because it had some financial implications to it. So normally, we don't get in, board doesn't get involved in MOUs typically, but we were asked to be involved because of some of those things, you know, in terms of time off and some of those things. So I just want to let you know that we concluded our initial bargaining with that union, and that MOU will probably come to the full board for discussion. We won't do that tonight, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that did happen, in case you're here, and that will come to the board for, for, for a vote at our next meeting, so. All right. So the next item then is, oh, our collective sponsorship agreement with North Bend and Marshfield. Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about that? I know it's from, I think, what we did last year.
Yeah, that's exactly what we did last year. North Bend, City of North Bend is closing their pool through the month of November and December, and then hopefully, they're reopening somewhere around mid-January. North Bend School District approached us again about a collaborative agreement in which they share our pool. The kids can practice together. They don't compete together or against each other. And so it's very similar to last year. If, if, once you give me the approval, it has to have board approval. Once you give me the, the A-OK, I will go into the OSA website and fill out all the paperwork that's necessary for that agreement. Swimming starts on November 15th, so that's why we put it here tonight, so that we could get a, get a decision from the board, so that I can go in and make that happen, so practice can start on time.
We need an action?
Yes, it does need to be a...
All right. I so move to accept the collective sponsorship agreement with North Bend and Marshfield.
Thank you, Kim. I'll second it. Thank you, Arnie. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Kevin has left. Said, he noticed, he told us that he had something else, so.
Okay.
He's not here. Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
And the motion carries. All right, Brian, go forth.
I will do that.
Thank you. And then finally, the, the next part of our agenda is all about the superintendent search. So Steve Kelly is here with us. Welcome, Steve, to walk us through this process from, with his experience. And just a little bit of a heads up, so there's a number of motions that we need to, to act on tonight to do our part there. And Steve, I'm sure will walk us through this. There's also a requirement to have a public comment section during this as well, so we do, there's a section for public comment at the end, to help fulfill those responsibilities as well. So I think that's it from that point. And Steve, I'll let you take it away. Except, Steve, we can't hear you, but other than that.
Oh, you gotta love technology. Thank you very much. Good evening. Yes, thank you very much for allowing me to attend virtually. And yeah, I'll take you through. We've got several things we need to do. And again, I don't know if you want to discuss each, take action later, or if you want to take action at each point, you just kind of let me know. But in the order of your agenda, one of the things that you'll need to do tonight, if you haven't already done so, is essentially a simple motion of declaring the position vacant, as of, I assume, July 1st, 2022.
And I, I would just suggest, as a word, if we take these one at a time, that's kind of how we've approached a lot of it, so. But I think, so the first order of business would be to...
I'd like to declare vacancy for the superintendent position as of 7/1/2022.
Thank you, Dustin. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Adrian. Any discussion? Right. And then for a vote, Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Kim?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
And the motion carries. We are declaring a vacancy for the superintendent position.
Thank you very much. The, the next thing we need to discuss and ultimately take action is the search calendar, and hopefully, I'm presenting correctly, but you should see a proposed calendar. It's the same one that's in your board packet. I'm happy to kind of walk through it very briefly, or, and/or just start with some of your questions. But before I do that, and I should have mentioned before your first action item, the three actions that you're taking tonight, the vacancy, the calendar, and the qualities and qualifications, are all requirements under the law before we can go into executive session. And there will be times during the search process that you will need to go into executive session to look at confidential information, to discuss candidates, to do your interviews. They're all done in executive session. But before we can go there, it requires these three action items, and one you have already fulfilled. So the second is the search calendar. It is a requirement under the law, as I've already mentioned. We also put it in the advertising materials, when the position opens, when it closes, when interviews will be held, second interviews, or what we call our day in the community, is all put in our marketing materials for the candidates, so that they have that knowledge upfront. It doesn't mean we can't change at times, if needed, the calendar. And I'm gonna point out kind of a range of dates that we may or may not need all of those. But here's November 8th. You see that on the screen. Those bulleted items are the things that we'll do tonight. You see here, December 13th, which I believe, if I got the date, date correctly, is a regular board meeting for you. We're gonna talk about screening committee members. What does that look like? And so at a future board meeting, you would need to actually select those screening committee members, but we'll talk more about that in a moment. There is the advertisement period, which is currently set from November 15th to January 10th. January 18th is when the board, the entire board and the screening committee would come together, be trained on how to look at the applications, how to access our database, and ultimately, how to rank the, well, the top 10 candidates out of the pool. And that training would happen on the 18th. From the 19th through the 30th is when you actually do the screening. We come back together on the 31st to look at those rankings for the screening committee to give feedback to the board, and then for the board to ultimately select the candidates that you're going to interview. Then there's a period of time for the board to conduct what we call internet and social media checks. And then here, I've listed four dates for the possible interviews. We may not need all four. Sometimes boards will take out an entire day. I think there's a Saturday or Sunday among these four dates. But anyway, it's just a range of dates for us to ultimately configure the interviews. Following those interviews, the board then selects finalists. We do reference checks here in the last couple of weeks of February, and then we have basically a day in the community. We bring in your finalist. There's a second interview. There's a meet and greet with the staff and community, usually in the evening. Usually lunch with board members, visits or tours of the city, or of the community and the schools. And then the board ultimately deliberates that, that evening. You move into contract negotiations, and roughly about the middle of March, you would be prepared to vote to hire your candidate, your top choice candidate. So that's very quickly, just kind of an overview of the calendar. Questions from the board?
Hopefully, we all had a chance to see this a couple times and let it sink in. I don't know if you all, if you want to take through the... Steve, can I ask, so, so by December the 13th, we would already hopefully have selected the screening committee members? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're doing it that day.
You would select them that evening?
Yeah.
So that means between now and December, we have to develop the process for applications, whatever else we're gonna need to do, and...
Yes. And we're gonna discuss that. It's a little later in, in the agenda. But yes, we'll talk about that tonight, and then depending, you know, what process that you choose, then, then I'll assist, probably Sarah, in terms of getting applications. That's usually what the process that most boards use. We'll get the application together, we'll get it out, we'll advertise it, we'll have a due date on it. Those applications will go to the board prior to the 13th, and then you'll make a selection on the night of the 13th.
May I ask a question? Steve, is the screening committee different than an interview committee?
It depends on how you, well, in this...
Are there two?
Do what? Sorry?
Are there two, is there a screening committee and then an interview committee as well?
My recommendation is your screening committee also observe your interviews, but the interview committee is the board. The board will conduct the interviews, just as they will ultimately deliberate on who's chosen to be interviewed. I, when we do the training with the screening committee, I let them know that they are giving feedback to the board, but only the board deliberates. And so, but to answer your question, Michelle, the, the interview committee is the actual, is the board as a whole.
Okay. I will let you know, I have, people have been sending me interest already. So for board members, I do have a list of names started for, for people who would like to be considered, however that process will look. So I have been starting to keep that.
And just while we're on the subject, that, that is my recommendation, and the screening committee is somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20. In a district of your size, you should have no problem filling that many folks. Many more than 20 becomes, because it's plus the board. So there's seven plus the screening committee. So if you have 20, then you've got a group of almost 30 folks, which I've dealt with groups that, that large. We're very efficient in how we do our work and what that looks like. So it sounds like a lot. And again, it's not 27 people deciding, making decisions, because ultimately, it's just the board. The board deliberates, and the screening committee provides feedback and information to the board. And again, we'll talk more about that in just a few moments, but anything else about the calendar that I can answer questions about?
Maybe by the calendar, no, looks like good. So if that's, somebody wants to make a motion on the calendar?
I so move to approve the executive search calendar process.
Thank you, Kim. I'll second that. Thank you, Arnie. Any further discussion? And then on a vote, Arnie?
Aye.
I vote aye. Kim?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
And Dustin?
Aye.
All right. So that is approved, the proposed executive search calendar.
All right. Thank you very much. The third and final requirement under the law is what's called the qualities and qualifications. And you see a draft here that was essentially the top nine or 10 items from the online survey that was conducted in your, in your community. We had well over, I think, 300 or 350 respondents, so we had a pretty large sampling. And this is essentially in the order of importance that came out of the survey. Now, I also want to say that the qualities and qualifications, above and beyond being a requirement of the law, is an important tool throughout the search process. This becomes something of a lens by which you, you look through when, when we look at applications. It'll actually be part of the scoring guide that we'll put together and we'll train you on. We'll have the qualities and qualifications there. It'll be useful when we're looking at interview questions to make sure we've covered all these topics. When you think about and, and view the interviews and the responses from the interviews, we also use this as a lens. So it is an important tool. Again, this reflects the top choices out of that survey. And ultimately, board, we want you to shape this or modify this in, in any way that you see fit. And also, this is where the, the public comment should take place, if we have time to do that, as opposed to before, you want that before your action item, I guess is what I'm saying. I know it's scheduled towards the end of the meeting, but if there was any public comment on this piece, board, you'd want to take it before you took any action. But first, board, your reaction, your response to this Q and Q.
I'll just say, I, I think the list is really pretty complete, and I, you know, I didn't have everything that I listed in mind, but it has most of the things, and the ones that I thought were really important are all on here, so I feel good about that. I appreciated the survey, so thanks for that survey, Steve.
You're, you're very welcome.
Do we know how many surveys came in?
I would have to double-check, but when I looked, I thought it was well over 350.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's really good to hear. Yeah.
And, and board, I will send you that entire survey, because we also asked some other questions, like what are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges of the district? I focused tonight only on the qualities and qualifications, but the strengths question is important, as we put together marketing tools. And the challenges question is important, as we develop interview questions, both in the first and the, the second interview. So it's a lot of good information, but tonight, because we've got lots, several things to do, I focus on the qualities and qualifications. But board, I will follow up and send you the entire survey.
Thank you. Okay. So is, is there anybody that, public comment on this right now? Have you seen it? There is any?
And we, now, don't we have in our policies someplace, like the...
And we, now, don't we have in our policy someplace like the um, basically the qualities of a superintendent? Or is that more of the job duties?
You, you do. Um, and it is more of a job duties, but in the very beginning of that policy, and I, for some reason, I want to say CBA, but I could be wrong. Um, but yes, you have a policy that's similar.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this, I don't know if you all did, I filled out the survey and I, I, I did the same thing as Arnie. I don't know if all my responses are either, but they're, they're basically in line.
Yep.
Um, it's kind of interesting that the top was effective communication and listening skills, I, I.
And if you're, if you remember, there was a question that said, pick your top eight. Right. We had many people in the comments say, I, you know, I couldn't pick just eight, you know, or, or they, they need to have all of them. And, but that's why we try to make them pick eight, even though I know there's a lot of important ones there. And effective communication, I believe, was seventy-five or eighty percent. I mean, it was very high. Same with the second bullet, having some background experience in teaching. And uh, high degree of integrity and honesty, I think, was well over seventy percent. So very high. And again, they're roughly in order of importance. Um, not that that matters when it goes out, but anything here, board, that you would modify maybe to make it fit your community or your view? And I tried to, I don't want to make this too small, but again, I know you have it in your packet. Um, but I'm trying to show the entire screen.
Um, the only thing that I, I see that's missing here in the put kids first is committing, committed to serving all kids K through twelve. The district started serving preschool children as well. Are we just leaving those kiddos out or can we, can we add that in there?
I think we could add it in there. I mean, I think that's probably how the question was framed originally.
Right, that's what I'm, yeah.
You're right, it is a little bit broader.
Right, because since we are serving those populations.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And that's an excellent addition. Thank you very much. That's exactly what I meant by, you know, tailoring it to your district. Because you're right, in, in our survey, we put K through twelve, but I changed it. I don't know if you saw it on the screen. Um, but whatever you vote on tonight, um, whatever changes that you make, then your motion essentially will be, I move to approve the qualities and qualifications as amended. And then I'll send those to Sarah first thing in the morning, if not tonight.
I would say to the, uh, to any of our viewers, if anybody's interested in making public comment, uh, now would be the time to do so. Um, there are obviously the other times to have input in this process. So uh, especially if you are on, part of our, our screening tool pop process and group as well. But if, if you do want to have a voice tonight, uh, please reach out, uh, and we will, in order to do that.
And I think, and I just want to say, I want to thank the three hundred and forty other people besides the board that actually have already given that by being part of the survey. So I do appreciate that kind of numbers, kind of, kind of survey, so.
There's nothing, and I can see on YouTube, there's one person.
Okay. Any other feedback around this uh, item? Okay, we're, we're good with this as a list of qualifications? If so, uh, we're going to take an option in that regard?
I still move to accept these qualifications as amended.
Thank you, Kim?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Arnie. Uh, to call for a vote, Dustin?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Uh, Adrian?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
All right, so now we have our list of qualities and qualifications.
All right, that takes care of the action items. There are three additional things that we should uh, talk about, but I'm going to take them slightly out of order. Let's talk about E and then come back to D. The composition selection process role of the potential screening committees. So we, we kind of started uh, that conversation. And um, again, tonight you won't name names per se, but you want to get maybe a general sense of what you're looking for at your December thirteenth meeting. And what I mean by that is, again, my recommended number is in that fifteen to twenty range. As much diversity across your buildings, uh, job classifications, meaning making sure that we have a good selection of classified staff, confidential staff, uh, licensed staff, administrators, um, uh, community members, parents. Again, the emphasis being on as much diversity uh, as possible. Remind me how many schools you have in your, in your district?
Six, is there seven or eight? Is that one, two?
Well, three destinations.
Five, six, plus the other, yeah.
Yeah.
Six buildings, right?
Yeah.
Or seven, actually.
I don't know, I was waiting for Michelle.
That's how you count them, Steve.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just, it's a bit of a challenge. Again, um, it's going to depend on the number of applications that you receive. But my, my point is, rather than having kind of a hard set, you know, one teacher from every building or one classified person for every building, because with six or seven buildings, you could easily then uh, use up, you know, twenty slots very easily. Uh, my, my recommendation, my coaching to you would be when the time comes, um, try to have as much diversity across job classifications, buildings. Um, and, and again, make sure some parents, staff members are represented. Sometimes boards will designate certain positions that if they so desire, will be a part of the screening committee. Uh, association president sometimes are granted that kind of access. And, you know, any other positions that you might have that are unique in your district that you would make sure would want to be included on the um, screening committee. So, composition, any questions or more conversation around just the composition of the team?
I guess my question would be, would the board be calling out, I mean, kind of picking and choosing from a broad list? Let's say we get forty people that are, that are interested. How do they kind of cull down? Is it just based on um, on that kind of diversity? Um, or is, is there a small application that people would fill out or a survey or something? I, I don't know, is, I, I don't know how board members feel, how, how you would kind of, you know, separate out maybe some of the interest?
Michelle, that's a great question. And I believe if I remember my sample application, I think I, I put on there in twenty-five words or less, why would you, why do you want to participate on this committee? Uh, but it really boils down to the composition. Um, getting as much diversity as possible. But you're right, if forty people apply and we've got to cut that in half, that's a conversation the board has to have. And it has to be in a public meeting. It can't be an executive session. And um, and sometimes I know that can be tricky. And that's why having kind of a conversation tonight around some general composition uh, guidelines or themes.
Michelle, how many people do you have already on a list?
Uh, at this point, about five. Um, and that's not including, um, I know we have uh, administrators that are interested. Um, so not many, um, but we haven't, we haven't kind of, kind of gone, you know, public yet, um, with soliciting anybody either, so.
So in the, in the uh, application, will you have things like, um, if we come up with a list of the kinds of people we want, say, uh, a Rotary member or a Chamber member or a person from the Empire District, a person from the East Side District, a person from Central Cusby. Um, if we put a list together like that, would they also put that, so they can check that? So we know who it is that would meet those different kinds of requirements to get that diversity?
Right, demographic questions, I'm thinking. So we have a cross-sector of not only buildings and levels and positions, but also, you know, we're not sitting with um, all men or, you know, ninety-eight percent men on a, a committee. So I'm looking at, you know, people with tenure and new folks and um, different positions, genders, people of color, all of those things as well. So it might be hard to pull that out of a, you know, a short essay saying, why do you want to be on the screening committee, so?
Yeah, we could, we could crush something that says, you know, we're looking for, please describe some, something about you in terms of diversity or something that we allow people to.
Have a checklist. Write it down aside.
Checklist of the kinds of things.
Yeah, as, as part of the application and in addition to kind of that twenty-five words or less, we, we absolutely, you know, uh, are you a staff member? If so, you know, classified, licensed, confidential, what building? You know, elementary, middle, high school? Um, and depending on what you uh, talk about tonight, we, we will absolutely add kind of that checklist's um, piece. And what I send you or what I'll s- send Sarah uh, in the morning, absolutely, uh, you can customize, add to. Uh, I just give you kind of the template and you make it your own.
I, I do think too, you know, it may make sense for us to do some outreach for groups that might not allow us. I mean, you know, some of the groups that might represent diversity may not respond in this sort of general way. But we may want, you know, the target groups that we know that we want to have some input in that process.
Abs- absolutely. I like the idea of folks encouraging, so board members, um, staff members. Michelle, if you, if you know somebody and you would like them to be on there, reach out to them, let them know, just, hey, I want you to fill out this application. Uh, but I also had another thought. And I've not done this before, so this is thinking in the moment, which always gets me in trouble. Um, if we had a large number of people, perhaps we cut them in half and half of them work with the board on the application screening. And then the other half could observe the interviews and give feedback to the board on the interviews. It, it, it would just, you know, depend if we had a large number and we want to give everybody a role. Now, my Sarah in my office is absolutely going to shoot me when she hears it. Absolutely. But it, it, I think we can do that. And we'll cross that bridge when we get there and um, but I just want to let you know that we could possibly come up with a plan that if you really, if you had forty, which would be outstanding, right? I would say nine times out of ten, we don't get enough applications.
Okay, we, that's a familiar process, Steve, that we've done before. When we've um, recruited um, like administrators, we've had a, a separate screening committee um, that has reviewed kind of the general applications. And then we have a separate interview committee. And so that's a process we're familiar with in this district. So that, it, that would work. We, I mean, that's definitely something that we could make manageable.
Okay, good, good. Um, so it sounds like we're going to recruit as much diversity. And, and by diversity, I mean that in, in a lot of different ways. Uh, not just racially, but just across your buildings, across job classifications. And um, in, and if we have to, we can split that group into two. Uh, really, it's a matter of signing a confidentiality agreement and, and just coordinating and, and organizing a larger group. But uh, I'm going to recruit Michelle to help me, so um. All right, any other, any other thoughts, questions around the composition? Oh, let me, let me talk. Excuse me. Uh, the selection process, like we've said, it's an application. Board, you get those applications and then you'll make some decisions on the thirteenth. The role of the screening committee, and we'll say interview committee, is one of, and I've already said this once, but I'll say it again, is input to the board. I mean, this is not um, you know, decisions by a super large committee. The board throughout this process is going to retain its right to deliberate and make decisions. And the role of the screening slash interview committee is to provide information, feedback. And that's part of what my facilitation does and makes it very clear um, that when it comes time, it's the board that makes those decisions. So I just wanted to reemphasize that again, because I have some boards get really nervous and say, Steve, how are we going to make any decisions if we're a group of thirty?
Yeah.
And that's just not the case.
Steve, can you talk a little bit about the, what, you know, what the sort of level of commitment is for somebody that might want to be a part of the screening committee? And how, what are they, what are they taking on?
That's a great, that's a great um, question. Um, I'm going to put back up, just very briefly, where to go. Here we go, okay. Let me uh, share the calendar again. Oh, no, sorry, one second. Can you get the right thing in the right place? There we go. There's a screen, there we go. All right, to illustrate, to help, illustrate my answer then. So, January eighteenth is when the screening committee would come together, be trained. And that's usually a ninety-minute meeting. Sometimes seventy-five minutes, but ninety minutes, that's the night that um, that we'll come together. I'll, I'll train you on how, what to look for in the application. I'll take you into executive session, show you the database. And then depending on the number of applicants, then for the next, it looks like roughly ten days from the nineteenth through the thirtieth. It will take about twenty to thirty minutes, depending on just how thorough you are and how fast or how slow that you read for each um, applicant. So if you have twenty-five, and that's roughly the average, something in that twenty-five to thirty range, you're probably looking at nine, ten, eleven hours of work. And you do that um, in the privacy of your own home. Once you have access to our database, then um, anytime during that nineteenth through the thirtieth, you do those rankings, you'll submit your top ten to me and my colleague. And so I would say right there, just in the eighteenth and the week, or week and a half that follows, there's probably a good twelve to fourteen hours of work. Then we come back on the thirty-first. Now, this is a longer meeting. It's usually a couple of hours for screening committee members. Because the first two hours, they're giving feedback to the board. I share the top ten ranking. Um, I facilitate a conversation of the, of the screening committee. The board listens, takes notes, but there's usually a couple of hours of work there. So we're probably in that fifteen to seventeen hour range. And then if the same group is going to be present for um, the interviews, then it's probably another ten to twelve hours. So you're looking in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five hours. Now, obviously, if we divide that up and we have two different groups, then that cuts that time down. But interviews, there's usually six to eight. They're about an hour each and then some uh, time to give feedback after each one. Is why, why I say it's probably fifteen to twenty on the applications, another ten to twelve on the interviews. So it's a, it's a fair amount of, of commitment. Okay, I hope I answered your question there. Was there a follow-up?
Nope, no, that's what I was, that's what I was hoping you would let us know. I, I think it just, you know, people, you understand that, that it really is a commitment of time and uh, right, going after it lightly, I guess, right?
And we're involved through the whole process, so that's the twenty-five hours total for all of us. We can't cut our time in half, right?
Sorry, and, and twenty-five hours is just the start.
Yes, I know.
Right? Because, as I've already mentioned, you've got internet, social media checks, you've got reference checks, and then you've got your final interviews, the day in the community. So, board, you're looking at more like forty-five to fifty hours.
Yeah. There's a good deal of work involved in, in hiring a, a good superintendent, so, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And so let's talk about, because we should put this in the application. Um, now I can. Now, I can do this one of two ways. If we're able and if you want, we could do the training in person. And so I would come there, I would have the board plus the screening committee in one large room. We could conduct our training there. We could probably do it in a hybrid fashion like we're doing it tonight, or we could do it all virtual. The reason I'm asking the question is because it should go on the application. If we're going to do it in person, then we should pick a time on the eighteenth and a location if we could.
I, I don't know what the board thinks, but I do think at a minimum, we need to have a virtual option. I mean, if, if nothing else, I, I don't think we can not have a virtual option for folks. You know.
Yeah, let's be very clear. I enjoy a meeting in person much more than I do a virtual meeting, but I, I do agree that there has to be a virtual option. And if you're going to have to have a virtual option, you know, I think that's where it starts.
Yeah. Thoughts? I mean.
I think we make them all come here.
Yeah, are you serious, Kim? Do you, I mean, do you?
No, I like in person, but I, this is my first in-person meeting this year, so.
I was thinking just two, just logistically, we're talking, you know, thirty people in a room. We have to find, you know, a fairly large space to do that. It may make it hard for some people to really even participate that way. You know.
And if there are only twenty people that apply, we can reassess, but I mean.
I do think trainings too are pretty specific, so it's not like an, you know, you know, there's general format and it follows a routine. So there may be some discussion items, but most of it is going to be imparting information about how to do the screening process. You know. I don't know.
Steve, you guys just went through this, right? So did you do it virtually?
I've done most of the work this past year, all virtual.
Right. Yeah.
And so I, I, again, I can do it either way. And what I'm hearing you say is that you would have an in-person option and then allow other people to join virtually. I will say, although I think you guys have got a pretty good setup there, sometimes it's easier when people are all virtual.
Yeah.
And I would say for this training, and I heard somebody mention it just a moment ago, it's pretty scripted and, and sequential, if you will. And if we were all virtual, it's, it's very easy to do it that way. I would say when we get here to the thirty-first, again, I've done it virtually and I can certainly do it in hybrid. And, and I want to be conscious of your costs because when I travel, it costs you money. And so for me to come on the eighteenth for basically a seventy-five minute meeting may not be worth your travel cost. And I would, I'm, I'm fine with that and I'm fine traveling too. So I'm, you just tell me, I'll jump in the car, I'll be there. But I, I want to be conscious of your cost. Whereas on the thirty-first, that's a three or four hour meeting. It's two hours for the screening committee, but it's three or four hours for the board. And that may be more worth your time for me to come. And same with the interviews. So again, the reason I'm asking tonight is we usually put it in the application in terms of where it will be held and what time.
I think the virtual option with everyone being virtual for that person, especially you, Steve, because, you know, once you said money, I was like, yeah, stay there. It's okay. We can, we can do it virtually and save that trip for you for seventy-five minutes of, of your time or ninety minutes. I think my biggest frustration when I'm virtual is hearing the folks in this room. It is a lot easier when everybody's virtual, except for Dusty, but everybody else.
Yeah, I got better. The internet is better.
You can come to my house if you need to. But, yeah. What do you guys think?
I, I think it makes sense to me. Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I, I agree with Steve though. Maybe when we're starting to do the real decision-making and the going through, that might be a time where we really want to have more of an in-person.
Yeah.
Because then you can see each other, you can make impressions and we're not losing people that are online.
January eighteenth, virtual. January thirty-first, virtual. And then when it comes to the bigger.
I, I do think we'd have to be cognizant if we're going to go all virtual, which I agree with. We have to come up with a place here or someplace else. We, we have people who don't have internet.
That's true.
And if we don't want to have a diverse committee looking at this stuff, we've got to give them options to be a participant. And otherwise they won't even consider it.
Yes.
And that's an excellent point because to access the database, our database that'll eventually have all the candidates in it for you, they must have an email address. And sometimes boards will choose somebody on the screening committee that doesn't have an email address, but they will create one, a district one or a temporary one. If, if you're so inclined, I'm not saying you have to, but it is important. The only way they can access the database is through the internet. And you can either set it up there and they come and do the work at the school district, or you provide them with an email address or some kind of internet access.
And we can lend out Chromebooks and hotspots too. If we do have screening committee members that, that don't have something like that, we, we can provide them with the technology that they need in order to, to participate.
Thank you, Michelle.
Here's another thought is it sounds like we're going, we're gravitating towards the eighteenth being all virtual, which again, it's pretty straightforward. I've done it all virtual, very easily can be done. The thirty-first, I heard maybe a hybrid approach. And what I would probably recommend there is the board meet in person because again, it's a long evening for you and there's decision-making that needs to be done. But then virtual for everyone else. Because basically, Board, you're just for that first two hours, you're just sitting, listening to feedback from your, your screening committee. And I would be there in person if you so chose and would facilitate that. And then when we're done, we basically, the virtual part is done. We, everybody just turns off their cameras and they're done. And then we're in executive session, so Board, you and I then would go through and do the deliberations. So I would say a hybrid for the thirty-first.
I agree.
I do too. That sounds good. Board in person, then everyone else virtual.
I think so.
Yeah.
I, I just, the deliberation part is so interactive. I'd want, I'd want all you'd be in the same room and I would be there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think we leave the interviews to be determined. That's a little farther down the road, whether you want those in person or virtual. But let's talk about them another time. What I've heard you say is for the screening committee, your role will be done virtually. The only thing we need to determine is what time will we start on the eighteenth and thirty-first? Because again, that goes in the application.
And the eighteenth is our, what are we doing, a scheduled board meeting?
The eighteenth is?
No, it's not.
Eighteenth to Tuesday, thirty-first is?
Monday.
A Monday.
But that special board meeting we had would be the twenty-fourth, right?
Right. Right.
Yeah.
So that's the offsets.
And there's no school that Monday, the seventeenth.
Oh, right.
My Thursday day.
So is that our board meeting?
No, it's not. Our, our, our board meeting will be the tenth, the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So the eighteenth.
So what, what are we thinking? We're thinking.
Five-thirty to seven?
Did you, did you say an hour and a half? Is that what I remember?
Right. Steve, did you say ninety minutes for this one?
Maximum, yes. Usually seventy-five to ninety minutes.
So, yeah. So if we're dealing, if we're dealing with general members of the public, it has to be after work hours. That's okay with me. I mean, five-thirty to seven? We're doing that with virtual.
Yes.
So.
This first one will be done virtually, right?
You can be wherever you are virtually.
And the thirty-first? Again, five-thirty is not a bad start time, but Board, just remember on the thirty-first, this is probably three to four hours for you.
Um, I guess it'll depend on what time you guys can get here, the folks that are working.
Well, again, if it's, if it's a, you know, public, we can't really start much earlier than five-thirty.
They'll be all virtual, right?
They will be virtual.
I still get in, five-thirty is probably as easy, as early as we can start it.
I agree. But again, for us, it's about as late as we can start it too.
Right. Five-thirty to.
That's true.
Nine-thirty.
Five-thirty to whenever.
Close, five-thirty to close.
Well, and I would say rarely do I need the full four hours. But of course, now that I've said it, it'll probably be.
That's, that's good because you only have.
We're not recording, we're not recording this meeting here. So five-thirty start time for both. Interviews will be to, to be determined. And again, that should go in the application. And Sarah, I'll try to incorporate several of these things. And then you and probably with the board chair will modify the rest of it to, to fit your needs as we've talked about tonight. All right. I think I got just one more.
So did you hear that, Diane? Because you were gone.
I did. I had to switch devices.
Okay.
Let's see. We've done that, we've done that. All right. The last thing to talk about is a salary range. And I, I sent you a salary comparison for you to look at for like-sized districts as well as districts in your region. What we like to do is establish a salary range, usually in about ten to fifteen thousand dollars. We like to put it in our advertisement because almost every candidate, if we don't put it in there, is going to call me and ask me what it is. And, and as you consider this range, and the reason it's not an action item is because when it comes time to negotiate the contract, you, you can be obviously somewhat flexible with your range. We want it to be high enough so that it attracts good candidates. At the same time, it must fit obviously within your, within your budget and what you would pay for this position. My ask here is no one really cares if you were to offer above the range, right? If you found an outstanding candidate and you needed in your negotiations to go high, no one's going to complain about that. But where I would, would not want you to go is low. So if we have a bottom of, and I'll just pick a number, one-twenty, then I wouldn't want you to start your negotiations at one-fifteen. And I only bring this up because it has happened to me before. And it really puts a sour taste in the candidate's mouth and I don't want you to start out that way. So just please make sure that whatever the bottom number is, that really is where you're going to start and move up from there.
Okay. And what's this TSA, TSA number?
Tax Sheltered Annuity?
That's a separate part of the contract, but many.
It is. I'm going to share my screen, I think, again.
We don't.
I was going to say, we don't. One of the few that don't.
Yeah, and those others have big ones, bigger ones.
So that's in addition to the person, though. I guess the new ones are probably later here.
That's part of it, but it's also just, that's what some of them do. I, I know we had, in the past, we had contracts that included paid up life insurance. And they got to take the policy when they left. That was another way of doing a TSA is that. So.
Is that generally like a one-time?
It's basically that we buy them a life insurance policy while they're here with an understanding of the end of the paid up life insurance. Instead of a TSA. So there, there have been different ways to give extra money by people that they take with them when they retire. I would say the ones that have the bigger ones, generally that's people who are not going to go on to another superintendent job. Right. Standing at retirement.
Right, 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 right.
And Adrian, you were here for Brian and getting what you have now.
Yes.
And Steve, this doesn't take into account anything like travel allowance or cell phone allowances or anything like that. I mean, that's probably standard operating procedure to offer your superintendent, correct? I mean, because I, that's, that's a couple hundred bucks a month on top of what we're seeing here.
Exactly. This really is just the base salary is what we're trying to get a, a sense for, for, for the marketing. But you're absolutely right. When it comes time to negotiate that contract, there will be other things like a travel stipend or a cell phone stipend or depending on where the candidate's coming from, relocation expenses. And, and we'll cover all that a little later in the search process as I help the board prepare for contract negotiations. Tonight is really just trying to get a sense of the general range of your salary. And I think I put in an email. And again, just to start the conversation, I never get this right, so please don't hold this as the gospel. But just kind of based on the average and what I see here, I think I threw out one-forty to one-fifty or one-fifty-five. Now, I want you to adjust that up or down depending on your budget and, and what you know about your, you know, community and your circumstance. But let's kind of start with that one-forty to fifty, or one-forty to one-fifty-five.
And I think this is really geared towards sort of a first-time superintendent sort of salary, right? That, somebody that would sort of be coming in with not that experience. I mean, that's really what we're looking at for the bottom end, right? Is somebody that's sort of brand new to the role possibly, right?
So is that, is that true, Steve, that these salaries listed are not the current?
Oh, no.
They're, they're a range of everybody.
Right. So I'm just looking.
You don't know what the experience level of that person is.
Well, we know Reesport is fairly, you know, if they had gone through one superintendent for another.
Yeah.
I mean, how long is?
The Reesport, the Reesport superintendent has been there the last three years.
Yeah.
That's right.
But you're right, you don't know the experience of these folks. But these salaries are their current salaries or perhaps last year's salaries. This is all self-reported information that OSBA gathers. So it's, it's somewhat accurate. It's relatively general. I can attest to the accuracy of every single number. It's just to give us a ballpark. But back to the question around the bottom part of your range, yes, that's probably for a first-year superintendent.
Right.
So that.
So if, if it was one-forty to one-fifty or one-fifty-five, then yeah, the bottom part of the range is probably very little or zero experience. Whereas middle or upper part of the range is a superintendent that has lots of years of experience.
So then.
Steve, what's the, what's the, oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead.
No, you go ahead because it might be answering my question.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm wondering like, you know, normally on our salary scales, our high school principals are the, you know, highest paid district, you know, administrator. What is usually the kind of the spread between a high school principal and a superintendent? Is that, is that relative?
It, it is relative, but I don't know what the spread is. I know sometimes, and I had to be careful, my colleague had to be careful with a, another district because their high school principal was, and another principal were pretty well-paid. And what we recommended for a salary range was actually lower. And so you don't want to pay your superintendent less than you do any of the people. That's not a good way to start either. But I don't know about the range, but I just know it should be more.
I mean, I do, I do think if you look at these comparative salaries, we couldn't really, we couldn't really offer much less than one-forty, I think, and really attract, attract some.
I was just going to say that, you know, I'm assuming Michelle and Candace would take a look at these because you'll have the ranges of where those top salaries are for the principals and where that falls comparatively to where we want to start a superintendent. And then obviously we need to make sure whatever we decide works within our budget. So.
Do you know, Michelle, what the principal salary is right now?
I'm a collective bargaining, one of the less for a teacher.
Yeah, we're, we're at about one-twenty-four, one-twenty-five for the high school principal, you know, ish. Yeah, one-twenty-six ish, you know, under one-thirty.
Okay.
So yeah, one-forty then would.
One-thirty-five, one-forty.
Would create a, a step. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with one-forty or one-fifty-five. I think that gives us a, a starting range.
Agreed.
Yep. Yeah.
Yes, I think that, I think that would work.
Sounds good. I I do say that one thing I just want to, you know, I don't know, you know, the vacation days, we, I guess that's part of negotiation as well. Like, sometimes, sometimes we give vacation days in lieu of additional pay.
Right.
And it's so, you know, if we have somebody new, I just don't know if we'd want to have this precedent from what we did before necessarily carry through. But I guess that would be part of the negotiating process.
And and that is correct. That's one of the things that, again, a little farther into the process, you'll get from me kind of a checklist of things to think about and talk about before you get into contract negotiations. Many times, school districts will somewhat mirror, at least parts, of the superintendent's contract with their administrator contracts, usually with around, you know, health benefits and those types of things. A lot of times, cellphone stipends will be the same. And so you'll want to do some comparison of your proposed superintendent contract with your other administrative contracts, because some of it will be the same, some of it will be different. You'll also want to look at your current superintendent contract. And if there's any board member that does not have currently a copy of your current superintendent contract, you should get one, you should read through it, and, again, just familiar, familiarize yourself with that contract. Because eventually, you know, you're gonna have to approve a new contract for your new superintendent. And also, depending on how recent it it's had a legal review, you're gonna want to have your board attorney advise you on language or any additions or subtractions from your superintendent contract. But, again, all that's to come. Tonight, we really just want to land on a salary range for the advertisement. What I've heard is one-forty to one-fifty-five.
Right, and so do we need to, the rest of it, like the personal days, vacation days, you said, we don't need to put that in the advertisement?
No.
Okay, perfect.
No, this, this is the big ask. People want to know what the base salary is.
Yes.
And the rest of it all gets negotiated.
Right.
Yep. All right, well.
We have a little.
I know.
And I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to jump off here without giving you probably the most important piece of information that I'm gonna give you tonight, if I haven't already done so. And throughout this process, I want you to be able to contact me at any time if you have a question, if you have a concern. So this is my cellphone number, so please write it down, use it when you need to. We're gonna spend quite a bit of time together over the next few months, and I truly look forward to that. And I I look forward to being there in person, too. I appreciate you letting me, you know, virtually pop in tonight, because it's only about an hour that I need. And, of course, it saves you money, which is also good as well. But my cellphone number is five-four-one, four-oh-one, three-nine-six-two. Again, that's five-four-one, four-oh-one, three-nine-six-two. I'll put that again in my email. I will tomorrow send you the survey, the complete survey, let you read through it. You'll get an email from me, and so you'll have my email address as well. And Sarah and Michelle especially, you know, please use that number. Let's stay connected. I know you're gonna be a vital part of this process as well. And with that, Matt concludes my portion for this evening.
Steve, can I ask one, one question?
Yes, please.
I don't know. I just want to make sure I understand. So in in this next step, are you gonna work with Michelle around developing something that we can send out for people interested in the screening committee?
Yes, I have a template. I have kind of a generic application. I'm gonna take and modify part of it based on what I know and what I heard tonight. And then I will send that to Sarah and Michelle, if that's the two people I should send it to. And and they will further modify that and get it ready to send out and then put the exact due date on it. And we'll get you ready for your December thirteenth meeting.
And then we should also do our normal publicity around recruiting people for the screening committee, so assume advertising it in the world and posting it so that everybody knows, and then.
Yes, I would put it, once, once the application is completed, I would email it to each one of your staff members. I'd put it on your website, front page, website. And then, Board, if you have people that you are interested in, recruit them. Just be careful not to promise them anything, okay? Just please submit an application, all right? And I don't mean for the superintendent position. Please don't recruit there. That's all. All right, please don't do that. If you have somebody that you want me to contact, then you call me. But you don't need to go out and recruit a superintendent. But you can recruit screening committee members. But, again, don't promise them anything, because obviously, it's a board decision. But just let them know where the application is, who they can contact, and please fill one out.
You all good with that, too, Sarah, Michelle?
Yeah.
Does anyone?
Good.
Anything else from the board? Thank you so much, Steve, for coming and and visiting with us today and giving us our next steps of direction, so.
Great information, Steve, thanks.
Absolutely. And, again, reach out to me at any time. You got my phone number, you'll have my email. If you have questions or concerns at any time during this process.
I feel like we're in good hands. Thank you, Steve.
You're very welcome. Oh, I better stop presenting. All right. There you go.
Okay, guys, that takes us to the end of our meeting intended tonight.
Do we have to ask again about public comment?
Sarah, did you, did you need, you said at the end of the meeting, you needed to go out and check the list? Do you still need to do that, or are we good?
No, no reason.
Okay.
We have one person on YouTube.
One person. That has to be a lot of effort for one person.
I'm just thinking.